Welcome to the regular meeting of the school committee of the town of Foxborough. Tonight is Monday, February 26, 2018. We're a couple of minutes late getting going, but that's because we have a packed house. For those who are watching on TV, we have got one of the finest assemblies of elementary students from one of the finest elementary schools I know of, the IGO School. And there may or may not be a few parents in the room as well, right guys? Brought mom and dad, or mom or dad, one or the other, both sometimes? So, we're delighted to have you here. Thank you for assembling. It's great to see everybody. I'm gonna just run through our agenda for a minute, because that's normally what we do. We tell everybody who is at the meeting or watching what we're gonna talk about tonight. And then I'm gonna turn it over to the superintendent, Dr. Berdos, who's gonna introduce why you all are here, okay? Does that sound good?
That sounds good.
All right. So, we have a relatively short agenda tonight. We will recognize any visitors who would like to be heard. We have some minutes we have to approve, as always. We have our teaching and learning highlight featuring the Great Kindness Challenge. The Great Kindness Challenge from the IGO Elementary School, Mr. Stanton and his group of students. We are gonna cover our superintendent's mid-cycle review, which is a little unique this year with our transition of superintendents, but Dr. Berdos has done a thoughtful job maintaining an update on that at the right time of our academic year. Mr. Yukna will talk about our Burl School renovation project, which is an exciting update. He'll also provide us with a budget update for the current school year, FY18. We have an acceptance to take up of a request for proposal for athletic training services. And we have a couple of donations to look at, one from the Rotary Club of Foxborough, and one from Chestnut Hill Studios. And then we have some other matters to discuss. I should make a note, just before we start, that Mrs. Bellinger and Ms. Lord are unable to be with us tonight, so I especially wanna thank Mrs. Weiss and Mr. Connolly, who are able to be here, which makes sure that we have a majority and a quorum, which I knew we needed to be careful of here at the, as we return to school after a week of vacation, school vacation. So, do we have any visitors who'd like to be heard? Okay, seeing none. Marilyn and Chris, if we could just take a look at the minutes of January 22nd. I didn't see anything personally, I don't know if you guys did?
Nope, I did not.
And, Chris?
No.
Okay, great.
I move to accept the minutes from our January 22nd meeting.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Minutes approved, three, zero. Okay, Dr. Berdos, our teaching and learning highlight tonight.
All right, so, before we start with our teaching and learning highlight, what I'd like to do is, we lost one of our fourth graders this week over vacation, Isaiah Spencer. And I'd like to take a moment and think of him and his classmates, because what we're going to see this evening is a truly wonderful outpouring of kindness from our IGO School. And I'm so excited to hear what you have to share, but I'd like to take a moment, if we could, as we think of Isaiah and just take a moment of silence as we think about him as our wonderful friend. Your message that you have for us this evening is so important, and I'm so excited that you get to share this wonderful challenge, because everything that's been taking place in our schools and across the country, we know how important it is to share kindness. And you have done an amazing job with your challenge that you've learned from your guidance lessons in school, and I know Ms. Foster in the library has had a part in this, and Ms. Reed also with a video that you're going to share with us this evening, and this wonderful challenge that you're going to display and share with us, this act of kindness and spreading that. I'd like to go around and have you introduce yourself first, and then maybe we'll start with the video, and have you tell us exactly what this wonderful challenge and what you've accomplished is. How does that sound?
That sounds great.
All right, we wanna start with Preston, then?
Hello, my name is Preston Burson. My way of spreading kindness is helping the environment.
My name is Camilla Burton, and I think kindness is being a little bit stubborn after someone.
My name is Moses, and I think kindness is showing love to other people.
My name is Megan Kelly, and showing kindness is helping your classmates.
My name is Timothy Kersen-Gremmell, and showing kindness to me is giving a compliment to someone.
My name is Zion Melendez, and showing kindness is saying thank you to the bus driver every day.
My name's Olivia Colas, and smiling at people.
My name is Rachel O'Neil, and helping and help, one act of kindness is helping an elderly across the street.
My name is Trevor Palmer, and one act of kindness is holding the door for someone.
My name is Morgan Riley, and one act of kindness is being kind to someone even when they're feeling down.
My name is Mark Sullivan, and showing kindness is including people engaged if they get left out.
So now you know why I love my job so much, looking here. I think, you know, these are ambassadors of kindness. They represent all of their classmates across our five fourth grade classrooms, but also the school. Very proud of them, and what we try to do at IGO School is to provide our students opportunities to shine. This was a program, something that, a project that Ms. Siddle brought to our school three years ago, and the challenge isn't being kind. The challenge is taking our kindness to new levels. And each year, what we do is we set a goal, and we try to break that goal, and we track the acts of kindness that we do over a one-week period. And then we challenge the students, the staff, the principal, all of us, to sort of continue those, and hopefully make kindness a habit, because as we have seen, one small act of kindness can have a profound difference on the life of someone else. So I'm gonna ask Ms. Siddle, actually, to talk a little bit about the program that you brought to IGO School, and give some highlights before we get into the video.
All right, well, the Great Kindness Challenge is a nationwide program, and it's been running for several years now, so we brought it to the IGO School three years ago. Each year, we try to beat our challenge. Last year, we had over 9,000 acts of kindness. Our challenge was to beat 10,000 this year, which we did. It's a great opportunity for the students to see how they can positively impact the school and the community with their own acts of kindness. We started talking about this in our guidance lessons. The students came up with their own ideas on what they wanted to do for the video. So they, some decided that they wanted to read quotes, others decided that they wanted to talk about how to say kindness in different languages, some students wanted to do little skits, and we brainstormed and came up with ideas during guidance lesson, and then they took time out of their recess to actually film the video with me. So they sacrificed some time of going outside and playing to get the job done. So it's just a nice opportunity. I chose the fourth grade class to make the video, because they are kind of the leaders of our school, being the fourth graders, and we thought it would be a nice opportunity for them to show the video and demonstrate acts of kindness at our school assembly to students in kindergarten through third grade. So not only did they have put the video together, but they also stood up in front of the school at the assembly and talked about some acts of kindness, and introduced the video. So very proud of them. Nice job that they did.
And as we cue up the video, I'm gonna have Rachel, Olivia, and Zion get some front-row credit here, because we were taking their spot, so we're gonna shift out, and have the three of you sneak on in there, and maybe the two of you can share a seat, see who is in hand if you want.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Is there a chair?
Yeah. Take that. Right over the floor, so you can sit with them. Do you wanna help? Good.
Kindness is unbroken. Kindness matters.
It's always a good day to be kind. Notice when someone needs a friend.
Discover new ways to be helpful and kind.
Never stop believing.
Everyone wants to be treated with kindness.
Simple acts of kindness can change someone's life.
Sharing is caring.
I go away every day.
Sprinkle kindness with respect.
Kindness is being a leader.
Do the right thing when nobody's watching.
Kindness is helping our community.
Kindness is caring for other people.
Kindness is frightening someone's day by smiling and saying hi.
Kindness is making you better every morning.
Kindness is helping others and helping senior citizens.
Kind people make a kind world.
Ten words of kindness.
Kindness is the language that the deaf can hear and the blind can see.
It's nice to be important, but it's more important to be nice.
Do acts of kindness, no matter how small it ever was.
How do we change the world?
One random act of kindness at a time.
Kindness is like a boomerang. It always returns.
A warm smile is the universal language of kindness.
Smile.
Ryan.
Smile, smile.
Because.
Kindness is a universal language.
Almerita.
Bon Daddy.
Dobro Daddy.
A mister day for the, um, gentele.
This is how you say kindness in German.
Pronek.
This is how you say kindness in Vietnamese.
Luxu ballet.
This is how you say kindness in Telugu.
Daya.
This is how you say kindness in Hindi.
Daya luta.
This is how you say kindness in Arabic.
It'swa.
This is how you say kindness in Hebrew.
Kasen.
Yes.
This is how you say kindness in sign language.
And, it's an eight-minute video that will have up on our school website, but as you can see, the amazing job that all the students did, and the examples of kindness from around the world, and just the sayings, and what's more important, I think, as a principal, is these students just aren't saying it, they're doing it. Every day, they inspire us, you know, with their acts of kindness that they do for each other, that I actually hear that they do at home as well. And, you know, today was a very sad day at IGO School, but there was a lot of love in the building that really inspired us, and our friend Isaiah was in the video as well. So it's nice to see that we were inspired by him and the kindness that he's brought to our lives as well. I didn't know if you had any questions, anything that you would like to ask the students?
Marilyn?
Do you just do it in fourth grade, or do you start when they're in kindergarten up?
All the way through, kindergarten, so the whole challenge is for our entire school.
Okay.
I want to know who keeps track of the math. Over 10,000, that's a lot of math.
Ms. Siddle does a lot of math.
Wow. Good job.
And the Great Kindness Challenge offers a checklist that we can pass out, and we actually edit it, and we revise it, and add some of our own ideas on that checklist, so students can actually check off, and then they turn to their teacher the number of acts of kindness throughout the week. We have the assembly to kind of kick it all off, and then throughout the week, we have quotes of kindness, and we share acts of kindness over the intercon that children have done, and then we tally up at the end of the week and share the number of kindness, acts of kindness that we've had.
How long have you been doing this?
This is our third year. So another reason why I thought it would be nice for the fourth graders to make the video is because they've been doing this now, you know, for three years, so they're kind of experts at it.
Have you shared it with the other elementary schools?
Yeah, and we've been talking about expanding this, and all of the elementary schools do different acts of kindness throughout the year, so we might actually have everyone join in next year.
And the nice part, too, is they get to bring it up to the Ahearn as well. It's already there, but they're gonna keep on bringing it up, the Ahearn Wake, we'll call it, instead of the IGO.
Well, today, I saw a student, first grader, and with your bulletin board that you have in the first grade hallway with the acts of kindness that had walked up, because students go and they write acts of kindness, and they put that in the envelope, and I saw someone standing over at the board and taking them out and reading those messages that were there. So it's continual, and so you're reaching so many other peoples, to have them to stop in the hallway and to take a look, and to see what those acts of kindness are, it just spreads the message that much more.
Is it harder being kind at school or at home? Home? Yeah. I just ask that, 'cause I've heard there's some younger brothers and sisters sometimes that can be challenging, so. What's your favorite part of the Great Kindness Challenge? Does anybody have something that they sort of remember? Zion?
Everyone can be kind, and it's not one day, it's every day.
Not one day, every day. Zion was our unofficial, our official MC from our kindness assembly the other day. He had the microphone and introduced all the letters to the students. But it's a great opportunity, once again, I always say, if we just give the children a chance to shine, they always do. And very proud of our students, you know, we have some students sitting in with this group right now, their first year at IGO School, and other students have been here along the ways, but we come together as a family, and we all make those contributions.
Mr. Stanton, I have a question for the students. Don't you guys think that we should just be focusing on math and English and stuff like that? Why do you think this is, is this important?
Yes.
Why? Why?
Do you wanna tell them why you think it's important?
There's no right or wrong answer, I'm just curious. Yeah.
'Cause without being kind, like, it'll kind of fall apart, and the school will be very boring, everyone shoving each other and pushing, and it wouldn't be a good place to live in.
What a great answer.
Great answer.
Great answer. What else? What? Is this something we should keep doing?
Yes.
How come? Yeah?
Because it's making other people happy when people do it.
Great answer. Great answer. Thank you.
Does it cost any money to be kind?
No.
How does it make you feel when you're kind to others?
Happy.
It makes you feel like really happy, and excited that you're doing it.
And would you like to grow up in a kind world or an unkind world?
Kind.
Wouldn't that be a lot better?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so, too. This is why we always start our school committee meetings with these teaching and learning highlights for you parents. This is not unique. This program is unique, but we always do this because it helps us, as a school committee and a school leadership team, stay focused on what's really the most important, and some of the great things going on in our schools. So, boy, I can't think of a better one we've done than this one, and a more important one, and a more timely one.
Very timely. Very timely.
Well, thank you very much for having us. And guys, only a few more years and you're up here at the high school. I feel like I'm at IGO School.
Well, we wanna thank you all for coming, and thank the moms and dads who came out, too. We appreciate it. You don't have to stay for the rest of our meeting, we always say that, we know you'd like to. But we'll understand if you wanna leave. But you know what? For the boys and girls here, all I wanna say is you guys keep up the great work, okay? Because you are gonna keep doing a great job, I just know it. So thank you very much, Mr. Stanton, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Siddle, Ms. Siddle's program.
Ms. Siddle, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
So my kindness ambassadors, we're gonna do a photo op outside, so we'll say goodnight, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's a great example, when we talk about our social learning program review and what's been out of that, the group guidance lessons that take place every month with our guidance counselors, and when you see when they take it to a level like that, in three years, they're trying to really build their numbers.
They do a lot of good programs at the IGO. Like, we had that Special Olympic one a couple of years ago. Every program they bring forward, the recycling one earlier this year, is always, is always well-done.
And it's the same group guidance lessons that take place in the different schools, and as Ms. Siddle said, it just looks a little bit different in how they go about implementing their random acts of kindness, and what it looks like in each school has its own flavor, but they have that same consistent curriculum that's there that's so important.
Yeah. I hope everybody had a really great vacation week. When I was going through a pile of mail yesterday, and I got our community report that we reviewed that talks about how proud we are of all the great things the schools are accomplishing, and this is an example, I was just so, so proud. And yet, it was a balanced week, and I don't wanna skip over the school committee's recommendation, or, not recommendation, awareness, or comment, or sadness about the passing of the fourth grader from the IGO School. Amy did a terrific job. I asked her to kind of do that transition in front of the students, 'cause I knew she would handle it better than I did, but, boy, just when you're so proud of how things are going, something like that hits you. Isaiah Spencer was a fourth grade student, and as I understand it, went off on vacation, expecting, and family expecting vacation, probably like everybody else, and didn't return. And it's tragic, it's disappointing. I feel like we've had several losses like this now, in the past year especially. And over the nine years that I've been here, we've had several of these, but, boy, it just, you know, our heart goes out to Isaiah's family, and I think it was very brave of how you handled that, and then Mr. Stanton, and what it must have been like at the IGO School today, and those students really did a great job. But on behalf of the school committee, our thoughts and prayers are with Isaiah's family, and we're very sorry. And I hope we don't have another one of these for a long time. We all know it's, you know, it's part of life, it's life lessons, it's probably a great teachable moment for the kids, but, I don't know, it's just sad. That's my feeling. And, you know, in a small little community like Foxborough, I think it touches everyone. In fact, I heard high school kids talking about it today, who probably didn't even know Isaiah, you know? So anyway, I just wanna acknowledge, on behalf of the committee, the loss of one of our fourth graders, and compliment you, I thought you did that well.
And I just, if I may, take a moment, our mental health staff across the district came to the IGO today, and we are such a small, tight-knit community, and they were there to support the students and the staff, and it really shows how important their role is, and really how much of a community we are, and that it is a very tight-knit, supportive community.
Yeah, thank you for managing that process. I know that's not a fun part of your job. You know, the other thing that I'll just mention quickly here, and we'll get back on track, but you think about what they were talking about with kindness, and you think about the other tragedy that went on with the Parkland shooting. You know, it makes me not naive to think that something like that, God forbid, couldn't happen in Foxborough, but just everything we do to try to prevent that, you know, and beginning with these youngsters, and learning about kindness, and the importance of taking care of each other, and, well, you guys have lived through it, you've both been here, you know, since young.
Couple of years now.
Elementary students. You know, I think the reason I asked them the question is it's important compared to learning math and English, right, is because I think it is important. Don't you, don't you think?
I agree. For sure. I, I went, did you go to the IGO?
I did not, no, I went to the Taylor.
Yeah, I went to the IGO. We did, we had a similar program with like heart stamps, where you would keep track of like your acts of kindness, and I think that's good, that that's implemented at a young age, 'cause, you're right, it is an especially timely thing to be bringing up, and, you know, what's going on in the news and everything, so, you know, you can't really go back in time, but you can try to affect change in the younger generation, you know, we're kind of the, part of the same generation as those kids are, there's not a huge age gap there, but it's, it's sad as a student in high school to see what's going on right now, but then seeing stuff like that gives you hope, that maybe that won't be happening in a few years, maybe things will be different, so, that's good.
Yeah, thanks, Kendall. And Dr. Berdos was just mentioning, I don't know if everyone at home could hear, but as the IGO students and their parents were moving out of the room, she was talking about how this fits right in with the social, emotional, learning program that was kicked off by Ms. Spinelli and Dr. Berdos within the past year, and, you know, amidst everything else that public education takes on, I think this is just a very good, timely example of what schools need to continue to do, and also, though, the leadership that we have in this school district to focus on things like this that will make a difference. And clearly, social and emotional learning is an important topic in education today, so I compliment Debbie and Amy and the rest of the team for having begun that work, and I think it plays out in what we've seen and talked about in the last few minutes.
And it's so important when we think about the safety of our students, when we're thinking about the mental health and well-being, that is such a huge component of safety in schools. We work very closely, too, with the Foxborough Police Department and other agencies, as far as to make sure that our students are safe, and that is our number-one priority, and especially in light of what has taken place. We met even with Chief Baker today, and continuing, and he's working, we meet weekly, and we have a lot of measures in place for school security and safety, and that, that is our number-one priority.
Okay, any other comments? I didn't mean to take us off-track, but I just think, in light of what's gone on in the last week, I think it's important topic to revisit and talk about, and the focus that we try to bring to it as a committee and as a leadership team here in Foxborough, and hopefully the positive impact it'll continue to have on our schools. I'm proud of you guys and the community here in Foxborough, and saddened when we see other things go on, and hope that programs like the kindness program will help. Okay, thank you. So our next topic is the superintendent's mid-cycle review. I mentioned earlier that we have a unique year this year, of course, with one superintendent through the wintertime, and our new superintendent picking up, and I enjoyed, in fact, I circled in your document to us, seven weeks, seven weeks in the job, you're an expert now, right? So would you like to? Well, you're handling it with great aplomb, is that the right phrase? You're doing a great job, along with the support from number two over here. So do you wanna kick this topic off, Amy?
I would be happy to. So at this time of year, which is the mid-cycle review for superintendents, it's really an opportunity to have that open dialogue with the school committee, and to talk about the goals at this midpoint during the year. So being that we're in a unique situation, Debbie Spinelli and I had joint goals to begin the school year, and we've always worked really closely together, and we worked very closely on these goals. So taking this opportunity at this time to really have what we call the formative part of the evaluation process for superintendents, really allows for that productive dialogue. So what I'd like to do is talk about what some of those joint goals are, and where I see that I am now with that, and then to go with traditionally what has been in the past, really what came back to your suggestion a number of years ago, was what is something that I'm working really hard on, and what is something I'm particularly proud of, and then also, what is a challenge?
And just for background, for anybody who doesn't know, the state requires us, as part of our evaluation process of the superintendent, to go through this really extensive process. And so that's why the superintendent comes back mid-year and says, here's how I think I'm doing, so that there's a dialogue with the school committee, so that there aren't too many surprises, hopefully, at the end of the year. And we boil it down, as Amy just said, to, you know, what are you really proud of, what are you working hard on, and what challenges are you facing? So that's the background for those at home, and those in the audience who are curious as to why we do this.
And the goals that go along with that is a student learning goal, a professional practice goal, a district improvement goal, and then other goals. So the professional practice goal, for me, this year, is where I'm transitioning into this new role. We have a new assistant superintendent with Allison, we have three new department heads at the high school, we have a new assistant principal at the middle school, and so there's a lot of leadership roles. So the professional practice here is really for the benefit of the district, for me to be able to work with the students and staff to ensure that we have a smooth transition with all of those leadership changes, and a smooth succession into my role, and that I'm able there to help them, as the newest members of our greater leadership team, be successful, because we know how important a team is, and how much we work together. So at this point in time, we've been doing instructional rounds, where we walk through classrooms, and we have a focus, and this year, our focus is really looking at student engagement. And so I've taken that instructional rounds, this three-year process, if you will, that we've been engaged in, to say, how does that coincide with helping our new district leaders? And what, we're
And so, that's why the superintendent comes back mid-year and says, here's how I think I'm doing, so that there's a dialogue with the school committee, so that there aren't too many surprises hopefully at the end of the year. And we boil it down, as Amy just said, to, you know, what are you really proud of? What are you working hard on? And what challenges are you facing? So, that's the, the background for, for those at home and those in the audience who are curious as to why we do this.
And the goals that go along with that is a student learning goal, a professional practice goal, a district improvement goal, and then other goals. So, the professional practice goal for me this year is where I'm transitioning into this new role. We have a new assistant superintendent with Allison, we have three new department heads at the high school, we have a new assistant principal at the middle school. And so, there's a lot of leadership roles. So, the professional practice here is really for the benefit of the district, for me to be able to work with the students and staff to ensure that we have a smooth transition with all of those leadership changes and a smooth succession into, to my role. And that I'm able there to help them as the newest members of our greater leadership team be successful, because we know how important a team is and how much we work together. So, at this point in time, we've been doing instructional rounds where we walk through classrooms and we have a focus, and this year, our focus is really looking at student engagement. And so, I've taken that instructional rounds, this three-year process, if you will, or that we've been engaged in, to say, how does that coincide with helping our new district leaders? And what, working with them one-on-one, what are their challenges as a new leader? How can I best support them in my leadership role? And what are they most proud of at the same time? And what are they working really hard on? And then how does that connect to our overall mission and vision of the Foxborough Public Schools and our strategic plan too? Because we all have a piece here. And what does it look like from their role? And again, how I can best support them. So, focusing on student engagement and walking through classrooms and how it connects to the science department with our new science department head, what does that look like when we look in music? What does it look like when we talk about a new assistant principal at the middle school with who's doing evaluations and, and really looking at calibration across the district? So, that's been wonderful and working really in an intimate way with them and walking through classrooms. And I learned just as much from them as I hope that they're learning from, from me there. So, that will continue ongoing this year, and honestly, it will continue as we continue to support each other. So, that has been a really fun, if you will, part, as part of the learning process too. As far as a student learning goal, as you know, we had participated in the OECD test for schools last spring and taking the results from that PISA-like test, which was a cognitive test of reading, math, and science, to say, what can we learn from that? And to take that data in order to look at our curriculum programs and see what the results are telling us, but more importantly, the implications that we have, how we can take and again, look at raising the expectations within our classrooms with our students so that they are globally competitive. That is the point. So, we took a look at our curriculum, we've taken a look at other data that we have within the district, we focused through our professional learning communities, which is through grade level and department level meetings to, to really tease apart the rubrics and the OECD tests for schools' results, and then also look at that in comparison to other district data that we have. And then on our professional development day in January, working with the department heads and their departments to again, take that information, what can we learn from it in order to have impacts on our curriculum? So, that's ongoing as far as a student learning goal and working closely with them. And then what are the implications and what are our action steps from moving forward from there? As far as the district improvement goal, that was our technology plan, which we heard a lot about at this table not too long ago. So, I'm happy to say that we have met that goal, I've met that goal, working with the tech steering team and Erin Hei, our director of technology, and that's been, it's an exciting process to put that plan together and to see what it looks like. And then it connects really back to that professional practice goal of mine, when I'm walking through classrooms and looking at teaching and learning with our department heads, how is what we're saying in the technology plan in order to really enhance learning and instruction, how is that playing out in the classrooms? And seeing concrete examples and then being able to identify where it is we need to go next, or what do we need to think about as far as moving forward? The other goal, which is to continue to implement our plan for a full campus, which is to have an eight-lane track and the bleachers and the press box, to have a full campus at the high school. We have, at this point in time, we have plans from the architect now, from the concession stand and the public restrooms, that's completed. Bill's going to talk a little bit about that because it connects well at this point in time. And then we also have the bleachers, the track, and the press box that is on the balance of the CIP and awaiting approval for March 10th at the CIP. And then we have that will be as a separate warrant article that will be for town meeting this spring. So, that piece is the goals. Before I talk a little bit more about some of the, what have I been working really hard on, I thought it might be a good time, if it's all right with you, to talk a little bit about that, that last goal as far as, because it is a, a other goal that's really district-wide.
Sure. And we may have comments or questions about each of the goals that you talked about. So, you want to finish that and then we'll talk about any questions we have on each of these, or?
Sure, go ahead and go to that.
Whatever, whichever way you, what would you prefer? It's easy.
Why don't I go ahead and talk about what I'm really proud of and what I'm working hard on?
Okay.
And then the challenges. So, what I'm really proud of, you saw an example of that with the teaching and learning highlight this evening with our students and with our principal and our staff, with Ms. Sittle, and that they're always willing to work together to look at what can we do better and to reflect on how can we make our schools better places, not just academics, but the overall school culture and climate. And that we're willing to have conversations that are courageous conversations of creating an inclusive environment. So, we've put together a committee, there's about 18 of us on the committee, that represents teachers, our administrators, myself, Allison, our Metco director, and it's looking at how can we assess our curriculum and our instructional practices to identify strategies and opportunities for program improvement in supporting and embracing, I think that's a really key word here, embracing differences and preventing and minimizing racial, ethnic, cultural, religious, and gender bias and/or discrimination in our students and our schools. So, when we talk about like what you saw with the teaching and learning highlight, random acts of kindness, that, that plays into that. Us having an idea of what our own implicit or explicit biases are within schools and being able to talk about that and to really embrace and celebrate cultures and to have some of those conversations, which we know even across the country and what you hear in the news can be, they, they can be conversations that can be hard at times. But to sit there with a table of 18 of ranging from elementary, preschool actually, all the way up to high school, and to have these conversations and to say, what are we doing in our schools, in our classrooms to celebrate differences and to make sure that we have an inclusive environment? What does that look like? How does it play into our curriculum? That's what I'm so proud of, is those courageous conversations and being able to tackle that and to say, how can we do better? And how can we make sure that we are meeting the needs and celebrating the differences of our students in front of us? It's a wonderful group. It's something that I look forward to coming back with the committee as a report at the end of the school year with what we've studied as far as research, research and our action plan and implications for, going forward. So, I, I really am very proud of that group. As far as what I'm really working hard on, really goes back to that professional practice goal and working with all of our new leaders and ensuring that we have a smooth transition and making sure that, that I'm there to help them. We know that leadership matters in the lives of our students and of our schools. And the more that I can give of myself to be present for others, to be a sounding board, to help others as they have struggles or they have celebrations, I want to make sure that I'm there as helping them in their transition because leadership is our fourth graders as the ambassadors, it's the leadership of our teachers, teacher leadership is critical, and then the leadership of our administrators. It really does take all of us. So, I'm working hard to be able to be there for the transition and to make for those smooth transitions for those folks as well as I transition, and I learn from them in my role too. And the last part, the challenges that I face, I think with it, again, it goes back to the transition and, and in any new role, there's a learning curve. As you said, seven weeks as far as superintendent. I'm very fortunate that I have the familiarity with the district. I, I know about the district, I know about the staff, I know about the programming, our initiatives, what our mission and our vision is. But at the same time, understanding and allowing myself to know that I'm in a new role. We have a new assistant superintendent who was the K-8 math-science curriculum director. We have hired for her position, but that individual will not start till the end of April. So, the two of us are really juggling three district-level positions, and we work really well together, and we have the wonderful support of all of our principals and administrators and teachers, they're, they're wonderful. But again, it's a challenge to be able to balance all of those things, and while at the same time, you want to make sure that you're meeting the needs of your students and your staff. So, I think that, you know, it does go without saying that there's a learning curve, and we, we definitely want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of everyone in the district. So, that's a challenge because we want to make sure we're meeting those expectations. I know I want to be able to meet those expectations.
Good report. Comments, questions?
My only question was on the district improvement, the technology. You have that one so far as met for developing and implementing. So, you have already trained the teachers and implement, implemented all the new stuff?
What is met is the plan has been developed.
Okay.
Creating that plan, it's a three-year plan.
Yep.
So, it's, we're working with the technology steering committee, like what are we, what are we accomplishing here? And then we'll have a year-end update on the technology plan at the end of this year to say, what have we accomplished? Where are we? And what are we setting our sights on for year two and year three?
Okay.
So, as far as what's met is the plan has been developed.
So, it's met as in year one, the plan's developed and you're starting to implement?
Yes, developing the plan, but implementing it will be a three-year process. Thank you for clarifying that.
That's it.
Marilyn, any?
No, I had a question, but it was already answered, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, Amy, I, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that you and Debbie put into this initially in terms of anticipating the, the transition and having one set of goals, even though we have two individuals fulfilling the role. And the continuity of your being able to speak to what you had both settled on as goals for the district, I think is very valuable. From where I sit and from what I hear from the community, I don't hear any transition issues whatsoever. So, I think you and Allison are masking a lot of the work you're having to do to cover at least three jobs and two people right now while also adapting to the new role. So, I think you're to be commended for that. When I listen to you talk about the professional practice goal and instructional rounds and, and then even the student learning goals where you want to see vertical articulation in programs and that type of thing, I mean, my, my only advice to you that I can offer is continue to do what you do because you both, you don't just talk the talk, you walk the walk too, right? You're both instructional leaders, well-grounded and interested in and focused on that instructional value, for example, why this was important to see kindness tonight. And as you know, the community of staff we have here value that in you, so I would just continue to do that the way you are, and I think that that will pay dividends. Couple of just questions for the heck of it. On the OECD report and starting to try to implement some of the findings, can you give us an example of something that came out of that? And maybe you can't yet, but can you think of something that you saw that you say, you know, this is the kind of thing we want to go explore or implement?
So, one of the things when it, it really goes across all three of those cognitive areas, what we saw within the reading cognitive test is the need for more wide and varied reading and the analysis piece within the reading. So, for instance, on the January PD day, we had the math and the science department working together on an interdisciplinary unit, and what does that look like at the high school level in reading in the content areas in math and science and taking it to an analysis, a higher-level analysis level? So, that was a piece where we're, we're getting a lot there. You're getting the interdisciplinary pieces between departments, you're seeing, well, what does it look like in math and science? They're learning from each other there. And then at the same time, we're talking about analysis in science and how that looks in analysis in reading, and we've talked a lot about closed reading here, really looking at what does the text say and what are we able to take from that? So, we're learning cross-departments, but it's something that will implement within our, will really make a difference within the curriculum in even the order and the pacing of where we are and how it best fits together so they can complement each other. And I know, Allison, you can even add to what you saw within the English department too when you were there.
I saw with the math and science also, I, they were actually looking at the, the results, and one of the pieces of feedback was about the real-world connections for students. That was an area that students reported wanting more of. And they were thinking about their curriculum and doing an analysis of the types of questions that they ask students and if the context is relevant to them and how they could have opportunities to overlap between math and science, because there's so much applied math within the sciences, and like you say, aligning the pacing. And then with the English department, they just identified so many opportunities to improve what they are currently doing so that they have kids at a critical thinking level. And they were very excited about it too. I think it's, that's one thing that I think is special about our staff is they see things as a learning opportunity. It wasn't, nobody was resting on their laurels, it was like, oh, this is actionable, what can we do with it? And it was immediate, it was right on that PD day right away. So, yeah, there's quite a few examples. And at the middle school, because remember, these are 15-year-olds, we've been talking specifically, not in science yet because we're in the transition with the role, so I'm not there as much as I was, but I did meet with the math people, same idea with the contextualized problems, that's something we had been working on for a while. So, this just sort of validated the purpose, and people were excited about that too.
And I think here, like specifically with this goal where it's kind of three parts, it's really looking at our district strengths with math, science, and reading, and then the curriculum implications. So, we're really having to parse that out because that, there's so much, that's the first and second, and the third part is the vertical articulation that you were talking about and what are our action steps? There's so much here that even on that January PD day, we were taking very specific topics and looking at the cross-disciplinary connections and where are the strengths between the two? Because it will continue where it's significant progress, but it's, it will continue to be something that we're working on the rest of this year and even in the future.
Definitely.
This is kind of the walking the walk stuff, right? And they both get excited by this vertical integration of programs. Do you, do you guys see any examples of, you know, emphasis on critical thinking, emphasis on writing even in math and science?
She's just a little happy about it.
I love it too much.
No, no, it's like especially taking like the standardized tests, like the SATs and stuff, you know, that's so, when you learn, you start to learn in elementary school and you're like, this is so annoying, like critical thinking, like I just want to read it and be done. But then when you get to these tests that count so much, you're like, wow, I, I'm really glad I know the fundamentals. And the part about implementing like applied math into science, like I'm taking AP chemistry right now, and like that is so, that's like another math class. So, like especially when you get into high, like even if it's not an AP class, like so much of high school science is math-dependent. Like, I don't take physics right now, but I hear physics is just like another.
Yeah, it's another math.
So, like especially just establishing the connection with the two, I think a lot of the times what happens is like I do this, and I know a lot of my classmates do this, you get so in your head that you know the math, but it's just establishing that relationship between the math and the science where you're like, you know this, you just have to apply it in a different setting. So, when you start to integrate, you know, what you learned from your different classes into the other classes just makes like this broader like learning experience that is really beneficial. And you see it especially at the high school level. So, it's good when you start implementing that at the lower grades.
Yeah, I'd say, I can't really remember much from elementary school, I'm sorry, but at least at the high school level, I, I, the English classes that I've been in, especially this year, have put a huge emphasis on critical reading and emphasizing like you need to look and understand what's in the text and how it's not just a collection of words, but like what that really means. And I notice as soon as I get outside of those English classes and history or like Kendall said on the SAT test, the SAT essay question was revolving entirely around critical reading, and that's why those skills are important, because when you go out to do things that become very involved with those skills, you need them in place to be able to accomplish it.
It's also exciting when you like see a connection, you're like, I read that in history and now it's in English, like that's so crazy. Like that's super dirty.
But you can someday transfer verbal skills, that's what we're talking about, yes.
It's a relief on the SAT.
That's very good for us.
Like crazy. Like I saw, we take, he's in my English class, we take AP language together, and I was taking the SATs, I, I was like, I saw this stuff in like AP language, AP push.
Now, I'm not mad I spent 80 bucks on it.
So, it's definitely worth it.
You know, what's interesting is when we were in school, tell me if you guys disagree, but-
I'm really old, you're going way back.
When we, when we were all in school, I mean, English was English.
Oh, everything was separate.
Math was math, right? Science was science. But starting to integrate all of that, I think, is, is what you're talking about.
It's a key, yep.
Code-dependent on each other is very important.
The transfer of skills and being able to apply them in different contexts, like you mentioned, is what the real world is actually all about.
Yeah.
So, we need to prepare you for that.
Do you two ladies see her in you guys? Just curious.
She's like so excited. She's got it all down, yeah. She explained it perfectly, fantastic job.
A bond of you two.
One more second, Joe. I think the, the last comment I just want to make, and then if anybody else has any comments, then we'll take Joe's question or comment. But I, I do want to recognize the fact that you are doing three jobs with two of you right now. The committee notices that, appreciates that, recognizes that. You know, we did such a lot of work trying to think about how to manage this transition- You know, we did such a lot of work trying to think about how to manage this transition effectively, but I'm not sure, thinking back, that we gave enough appreciation to the fact that there would be a little extra on top of you, in addition to all the things you're both having to learn right now. So my question would be, is there anything we can do to help support you in that? I think I know the answer, but besides acknowledging it and thanking you for it, is there anything you need, any support we can provide?
I, I think that, I personally feel I have the support. I have you each individually reach out to me at different times with positive feedback, and that's so appreciated, even if it's just a quick message, or if I see you at one of the schools. So I do feel that support, and just as I was saying, even with, you know, the principals and the administrators, too. It's a good place to be, and they understand, just as I know that you do, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we're exceeding the expectations.
And remind me why your bet, Phil, isn't coming until April, or can't start till April?
She's under contract somewhere else, so it was really about her finishing some of the work that she started there, and it was more of a professional courtesy, I would say, between the two. I personally have some things I'm trying to finish up, too. It's a little bit more challenging, and so I would say, I mean, the tremendous support of everybody, but the patience that people have shown, because the email might not get answered that minute as it used to, because there's a little bit more going on. I think our teachers and our staff have been fantastic.
Well, and I do think it's advantageous, and again, we've talked about what great fortune we had to find two excellent candidates within our district, that you don't have the learning curve of coming from somewhere else and trying to learn everything new about Foxborough, because you know Foxborough.
Right. It's been a huge advantage for both of us, yes.
Any other comments or thoughts on the mid-year superintendent's mid-cycle review? Joe?
Just to verify, okay?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm Joe Garrity, I'm a post-12 student at Foxborough High School. I just wanted to verify about the final push for the projects at the athletic complex, which was to, the reason why I'm understanding is we're having the, this project as a separate warrant article at town meeting, is it because, because it's a high-cost item?
That's right, and I think Mr. Yugna's going to talk about that in a few minutes, but that's, that's right. The reason why that part of it is going to town meeting is because it's a large cost item. But there's, but there's another part that we'll do first, so can we hang on your question for a minute, and if Mr. Yugna doesn't answer it in a little while, you come back?
Sure.
Okay.
That's perfect. Thanks, Joe.
Anything else, Amy, on the mid-cycle review?
I think so. Just we'll continue on these, these goals that are here, it's, I think they're really good goals, and there's a lot of good work to do within each of them.
Well, I like that you think there's good work, I like that you sink your teeth into it, and as I said, just keep talking the talk and walking the walk, because I think that'll serve you both so well, it has so far, and it'll serve us real well, too. Okay. Bill, you had some good news on the Borough School.
Yes, you want to do the, just the update on the?
Sure, whatever order you want, yeah.
So you have, if you could just pass it around on your side. So to Dr. Berdros's point, we promised that we would bring forward to you what the design on the concession stand is, and this went through a number of iterations. The front of the page shows you kind of the exterior, the back shows you really a bigger view of what the interior will look like, but as you can tell, we're trying to do everything with this one building. The one side, if you looked at the west elevation, you'll see there's a little bit of a jot out on that, and that's the, what's going to be the ticket booth. So when you come in right off the parking lot, which will be the lower, currently the lower parking lot area, that doesn't have a normal gate through, we'll have a gate there, you'd come right in, the ticket booth.
I'm sorry, lower meaning closer towards?
Student parking lot, going closer towards the entrance way, yeah. We'll have an actual gate there, we'll move the gate from being over the corner near the tennis courts over towards the corner on the opposite side. And that way, this building could house the, that ticket function in it. As you came around the building, you would have a full-size concession stand with full, two-fold opening for, which you could effectively have four lines because of their size. We also developed it to have ample storage in the back, and figuring within any season, we have multiple sports and multiple boosters clubs. We actually set separate storage in the back for each one of those boosters clubs to be able to lock their stuff up, and be able to be comfortable that during their season, they can control their own stuff, as well as have their own refrigerators, and again, be able to control that. That's one of the biggest issues we've always faced over at the, at the Hearn. Then in the second portion of the building is effectively the lavatory portion, as you'll notice, there are two unisex bathrooms off the front. That's partly so that we can have the capability of dealing with young parents with young children and stuff, because they would have changing tables and that in there. It also gives us the ability to have just those two open if we're having a small thing going on, and not have to have the larger bathrooms open if we don't need them, if there was just like a small practice going on type of thing, where we didn't need to open up the whole thing.
Are those handicap accessible?
Yes, they are.
So both, both the small unisex and the big room is all, SFP.
You'll note that the, the entrance way into the larger bathrooms is, is a one-large opening that splits off and goes in both directions. That's to allow us to have one of those large rolling doors, from a security point of view, where we can lock the whole thing down when we're not using it. But then as you go into each side, you know, you'll see that obviously we have ample facilities. We actually are about 50% higher than what the building inspector had asked for. And again, that's just because, you know, the base, the size that we expect the bleachers to be in our end. It's, you can see it's a block building, we want it to be as durable and maintenance-free as possible. So currently, we're at a stance where we are outpricing each part of this. We've got the trust system coming back to us shortly for the roofing. We already have a block guy, a couple guys giving us pricing on all the block work that's going to be done with this, and we're working with the town to develop the sewer connection, which actually has to make it around the back of the building. So we've got a number of steps, but they're all going at the same time right now. As I said originally, what our hope was that last year, that the track would have been approved, so that we could do the site work all in one shot. And as it stands right now, you know, we, in the next month or so, if we get the indication that, that the, it may be go this year, we would still try to tie them together, but if we find any reason that that's not going to happen, then we will just go right in this spring and start doing the concession itself. The thing that, even though we've had engineers, Bay College did a great job laying out the entire facility for us a couple of years ago, but it's always nerve-wracking when you put something in place, like a building, and you've got to make sure that the track can still make it by it, and that you still have all of the, you know, points of access that you need. So, you know, it's nice when you can do them both together, because then you know you've got to tighten down, right? But I'm not too concerned about it, I'm sure the engineers will have it right, so. So we're actually in a pretty good stance right now. We will review this, the full set of plans with the, the building inspector as soon as we get back some of our information on our trust systems and stuff like that, just so that we know we're all, all set to go, and that we'll pull a permit on this anyways this spring, probably within the next month or so, to move forward.
Well, it's, it's exciting. I know we've been talking about it for a while. We've got the funding approved, of course, in case anyone has forgotten that, so it's, it's anxious to see progress, but I know we always like to do it right. Any questions or comments from anybody at the table?
What's roughly the timeline for this?
The building itself will take probably about three to four months to build, so it's not likely it would be done for this spring, but it will definitely be up for next fall.
Senior year.
Exciting stuff.
A chance of bleachers by football season?
I was hoping for that way back then.
I think the bleachers actually are the quicker assembly, there's a little bit longer timeframe as far as the ordering of them. So if we were to get permission, you know, or approval in May, funding-wise, it would be one of the first things that we would have to go out to bid on and place the order on, because my guess is you're looking at a two-to-three-month minimum lag time from order to, you know, onsite delivery. And you can still do all the footings and foundations that you need to set those on. The reality is you have to build the track first, you know, because obviously this is, that's on the outside path. So there'll be a lot of work going on pretty quickly here, and we'd have to get as much done during the summer as we possibly can, so that we wouldn't be on top of, you know, the use of the field, as you know, that's, that's used constantly, so. But it would be nice to see, you know, the ability to have, whether it's, you know, varsity soccer or football, you know, at the stadium this fall, if we could get to that.
Are there blueprints for that in place, or?
There's a full, there's a design that's totally done by, you know, our civil engineers as far as the layouts on how everything fits in the area, and I've already contacted, we're very fortunate to have a very good engineer who did the turf field, the original turf field for us, and he's more than interested in, in working on putting together the final design, so we can go out to bid on the rest of it. So that's our next thing over the next month or so, is to kind of get those in place, so that as soon as we have the funding, we can just move forward with it.
Sorry, I get a little excited about this.
Joe, were your questions answered, when you spoke about it this time?
When I was clarifying, I, my understanding of the?
Oh, the single article? The reason for the single article, Joe, is that what was brought up last time around was, as you said, this is a very large dollar amount. We're looking at about, well, the current ask is $1,150,000. It's $600,000 to do the track, and about $550,000 to do the bleachers and the press box. The, and the, it was kind of evaluated that in our normal CIP process, which is buying school buses that are $77,000, or, you know, highway trucks that are $100,000 type of thing, this is a very large piece. So rather than have it all in with the regular CIP budget, which has all those other littler components to it, that this should sit on its own. And quite honestly, I, we've done it for every building project we have, so I don't see an issue. I see actually a positive to that, because I think it separates it somewhat from the fray of all the other CIP asks, and allows the taxpayers to make the decision in the end if they want to fund it, as long as the funding is there, which all indications at this point, from the town side, is that we do have the ability to do it this year, it's whether or not taxpayers wish to.
And that's, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Bill, but that's an important point that we've talked about throughout this process, that I think we should just continue to reiterate, and I was going to ask you the question, but you just answered it, which is that the indications that we have on the school side, from the municipal side and the finance director, is that this is a good time to pursue this with the town. That remains the case.
Exactly. You know, they, they have actually, I mean, it was kind of nice that we've had this in our, in our plans for the last couple of years, similar to the Borough project, where we've, we've been talking about it for time. It's not something that the town side hasn't been thinking about or planning on. You know, I, I know there was one other issue that was brought up, and that was, you know, about trying to fund something like this through donations, and we did, I think, you know, try to very clearly say that we've done a lot of donation work on this. I mean, when you look at this field in general, we were fortunate that our lighting system is, is probably a $380,000 lighting system, that we paid $175,000 because of the work of Sam Burns's father, with the company owner, the Turf Stop Group, that raised a lot of money to, you know, initially spent a lot of time, and, you know, we're able to raise $65,000, which took them quite some time to do. You know, we did the thing with raising money for the concession stands, and again, a lot of work went into that, and we were able to raise, you know, $21,000, $22,000, but you're not going to get to this type of a project, you know, through fundraising. You know, not, not without, you know, a lot of angst and a lot of time, and if, if the town wishes to wait years and years, then yes, I think you could have some options, but it would have to be an amazing amount of fundraising to get to close to $1.2 million. It's a capital project, it's a completion of a facility that the town has and that the town will control, it's not just for the schools, it's for the youth. So there's just a lot of community orientation towards this, as there have been with most of the projects we've done in town, so I really think it's the taxpayers, you know, should be their decision to make which way we go here.
Bill, I'm not an expert on concession stand design, but let me just ask you a couple of things that pop up. First thing I was going to ask was the ticket window, I see one window, but I think I've noticed that it's four feet wide.
Right.
So that's not a bottleneck, we could potentially have two people sitting there taking tickets, even though it's a single window.
Right.
There's, all the 36-degree ref, REF, is that refrigeration?
Yes.
So lots of storage, refrigerator storage. And then the site itself, can we pull this as close to the parking lot as possible to give you more flexibility for that track, and is that the idea?
Yeah, the idea is, right now, the, the gas lines that come up to the building are just on the parking lot side of the fence, and you know, the fence is only five feet away from the parking lot. So all of our major gas lines are going right there, this building would be basically butting right up to that, because obviously we're also going to pull from that for the gas feature within the heating and the cooking side of it. So, yeah, it's squeezed and it's pushed. We had, when we built that electrical substation that's out there to do the lighting, we had designed that to actually be the electrical feed for this building as well. The undergrounds are already there, going in the direction we wanted them to go in, and when we put the scoreboard up, we kept all of the wiring and stuff that had to go back from that electrical thing against the fence, too. So we kept everything with us all, and kind of in mind as to where this had to be to make it work.
Okay. Any, any other questions for Bill about the concession stand? Okay, should we talk about the Borough for a minute?
Sure. So, are you okay, Joe? So you'll see in your, your package that we, the school building committee, as your representatives, as you remember, you voted to give the authority to them to continue to move this project forward. Again, the committee is made up of 18 people, it has specific slots that the MSBA requires us to have, which is your superintendent, it's your principal of the school in which you're working on, it's your finance director, your town administrator, or town manager, and it's also having somebody who is MCPPO certified, which is at the purchasing side, and Roger Hatchfield did fill that position, I also now fill it, because I also have that certification. The, then it also has the full building committee. So basically with the 18 members, we have the capability of representing the school's interests and needs, and also representing the town's way of doing the project and processes. We originally had about six different renovation plans, we narrowed it down to three. We had one repair plan, which was really not a viable plan, because it, all it did was try to fix windows and a roof, but it didn't do anything towards the education plan for the Borough School. And then we had to develop one new construction. The new construction, I think I explained to you, only fits in one, one spot of the Borough property, and that would be in front of the existing building. Because the property constraints in that area, it would have had to be a two-story kind of odd-shaped building, which we don't really like on the elementary level as much as we like single stories, because of the student base that we're working with. And the odd shape of this really didn't make it feature-wise. It also would have meant that we would have lost all playgrounds for the years and a half or so that we were going to be doing this work, because we would have needed that space for our lay-down space for, you know, supplies coming in and equipment and everything else. So we virtually would have been having a building that was active, with a building being built behind it, with no place for the children to be outside, or, you know, have any kind of outside recreation or exercise. So that was a tough one for us to swallow. The pricing on the new construction and the renovations were very similar, not unlike what we saw when we did our original pricing at the town hall. I know everybody has a hard time understanding how that flows that way, but kind of in a brief nutshell, new construction, you have the freedom and the ability to go without any impediment of existing walls or anything, but you have to build everything. So you have to build a new foundation, new exterior walls, and so on. Renovation, on the other side, requires you to take all of those features that currently exist, take them apart, and rework them. So anything that you're reworking, obviously, is also, has a heavier involvement than something that's brand-new, but something that's brand-new has more pieces that are brand-new than the renovation has. And that's why the costs, quite honestly, come out very close in most of these projects, and, you know, so it's, it's not unusual. The other side of it is, I'll be honest with you, the new construction cost that we were looking at was without having to deal with all the field stuff at that point, because you're not, you know, we're really looking at just the buildings. But when you started to add some of the other things that we would have come into, plus the fact that the state's MSBA program would not have funded as much of the new construction, now that's not why we made this decision, but they would not have funded as much of the construction. So even though technically we're getting about 50% from the MSBA, we would have gotten less percentage-wise on new construction. have gotten less percentage-wise on new construction than we would get through the renovation side. So, but I think the most important part of this, and I want to congratulate Amy for doing a really phenomenal job in front of the MSBA because I've been there a number of times. I know the characters that are in play there. I'm sure they consider me one of them. But the, we came out of that meeting with her doing such a phenomenal job explaining how Foxborough's education plan mirrors the way this plan is laid out and how we're going to use the space, what we don't have today that we need, what the changes, how they will be in advantage to the school system itself on the long run, that one tip, one, there's three people that have the right to really kind of converse with us during that meeting. And one of them, I have never seen her say anything nice in any of the meetings I've been at. She's very critical, you know, and that's her job. I mean, let's face it, that's what she's there for. She started off, you know, with a glowing, you know, commentary about the education plan, could tell that the district wrote it themselves and that it was, you know, right, spot-on. And myself and the architect are looking at each other like, oh, wow. Don't know where this is coming from, but. And actually, all three of them gave very, very good comments about where we were going, one of them being an architect. And she really, you know, her things that she wanted to make sure we had already kind of looked at, because you can't tell by looking at a plan, and we were able to address right away that we already had. And these are some of the things that, you know, how we addressed it. So I think, I think at this point in the process, we honed in on one that the group unanimously picked, which was the plan that you have in front of you, E3 or 3E. And what it does is it takes the core building that we have today and it brings it up to all of the energy codes and all of the safety and, you know, requirements within classrooms. It changes how we deal with bathrooms. You know, if you know the building at all right now, there are toilets between a lot of the rooms, first and second grades. We won't have that in the end. We'll have it in our kindergarten area, we'll have it in our pre-K area, which are the areas that it really should be in. And then we'll have some additional gang bathrooms that allow us to basically give more room back to the classrooms. The gym has always been an issue for that school because of its size of only being two thousand. The state believes an elementary gym should be six thousand square feet, so that's why the addition is six thousand. The, I will also tell you that instead of putting, keeping the gym on the inside and say maybe getting rid of the auditorium that's there and making that all the gym, the cheapest space in school construction that you can build is gym space. So if that, if you're going to build something new, that's the one you want to build new because it's the cheapest piece, component-wise, that you can build. It also gives us the appropriate science, I mean, music and art space and lets us take our current auditorium and turn that into a good-sized media center that the school's been missing, as well as a technology lab, which has only had a half a technology lab for a number of years. So I think, you know, the plan overall mirrored the education plan as best as you could and it really came out from the state. You know, I know other towns who have gone in front of them that they've been forced back to redo their plans. You know, we weren't. They gave us some very good constructive advice, things they wanted us to make sure we kept watching and looking at as we moved forward. But they basically, you know, allowed this plan to move forward as the appropriate plan. So we have a lot of steps to go. As you can see, I kind of gave you a timeline. It's probably discouraging to look at in some degree, but we've also hit every single timeline with the MSBA at the earliest that they allow us to hit it. So we haven't lost any time on our side. I think the team, both KBA and Colliers have done a great job ushering us as we keep pushing as well. But we have between now and July 11th to fully explore this schematic design and really in detail now, put all the information. So what you have is a nice picture of the schematic design. Our true schematic design has a lot more technical detail built into it. And I will actually say, I think KBA is ahead of where they typically would be at this phase because they had to do a lot more work knowing that the renovation was the one we wanted to go with. They had to get into the ceilings, they had to know what the plumbing was, just to know if this was really doable. Because if it wasn't, we wouldn't be going forward. That, by getting it in by July 11th, the board will then vote at their August 29th meeting. Assuming that they approve the plan and the cost, we will come out of that meeting with a funding agreement, which we then need to go back to the town and get the town to approve the town's portion of the funding. And that can happen anywhere from September to November. So we've got a hundred and twenty days in which to do that. Obviously, the sooner we do it, which means having a special town meeting, and depending on the funding source, right now, we're being told that the potential funding source is going to be out of the operating budget, so it wouldn't be a debt exclusion. If it's not a debt exclusion, then we don't have to go to the ballot. If it is a debt exclusion, obviously, we have to go to the ballot and the town meeting. So there's a two-step process there. I assume as we get closer, the town side will work with us more on the understanding of how they want to go. They are building a capital stabilization fund and there's, you know, a few million dollars in it now and hopefully, by the time we actually get in the ground, there'll be even more in it that would help to fund this project again, keeping the cost off the taxpayers from an additional cost. The, once we, so again, this is why the numbers start to get a little fuzzy because if you do it in September, it's going to be one date as far as when we get into the ground. If you do it in November, obviously, it's a date further out. The construction document development from once the town has funded it is somewhere between nine and ten months of getting the full documents done. Again, very similar to every project we've done, Town Hall included, takes that long to get your final specifications done. If you saw the Town Hall ones, there are two books about this tall with all the specs and everything that has to go into the building. There's hundreds of pages of plans that detail everything, wiring, plumbing, you know, roofing that has to be done inside the building, the different types of interior materials that are going to have to be used. Once we have that done, we can go out to bid. There's two to three months in getting the bidding process done, getting the file sub-bidders and the general contractors. We would, what we, what our current stance is and hoping that you're in agreement with this, is that a lot of schools basically will go out and bring in temporary buildings, very expensive, number one, not easy to control temperature-wise. Our theory at this point is to build the gym addition and the pre-K addition starting that early. So if we were lucky enough to be able to start in the fall of the year after we got our funding, we could effectively have that done before the school year of the following year and that would give us nine classrooms, which would then allow us to go back into the main building and take nine classrooms and start working on them and phase it in and then, you know, switch those and take the next group of nine and go from there. So obviously, we would take every advantage like we did on the high school with any kind of breaks we have, you know, to get there. So, you know, we're really looking at a project that's going to take us out another probably three and a half to four years to completion. And it's, you know, I think the MSB has a very cautious, methodical program that they require you to go through. And again, I think it's for a community like Foxborough, it's financially well worth our while to do it that way, number one, but number two, it doesn't hurt to have someone question you as you go through the process to make sure you're always thinking of the right thing to do. So that's where we currently stand. Again, it's a big project and we're a portion of the way into it.
A portion.
Can I ask you some questions here?
Sure.
Just because this is my school. So this, the music and the art is where the gym is now. And the media lab, computer lab is going to be where the auditorium was. So I see stage here is a little bit tinier than that, but is the gym going to be used as the audience?
Yeah, so...
Multipurpose?
The concept that the MSBA has is they do either what they call cafeteriums or gymatoriums.
And that's what that is?
And that's exactly what that is. It allows you to have a full-size assembly area that you can have the entire school.
Right.
We would have small bleachers on the sides and chairs, storage and chairs that we could put out.
I saw the storage and it's just a tiny bit smaller, the stage.
Stage, actually, stage for stage, it's the same.
Oh, it is?
Because you have different lost space on the sides that you can't use.
Okay, and that's where you would store the chairs, okay. I was wondering where we're sitting, that's all.
Yeah. And, but you bring up a good point on the auditorium. I know we've talked about this before, but I want to be very clear that the reason the auditorium, and it was funny, I had a phone call from one of the people that was on the building committee when they built the Borough, questioning why we were eliminating the auditorium because he was one of the ones who fought for it. And when I explained to him that the issue is, first of all, the current auditorium does not meet handicap accessibility. The grade is too steep. The only way to fix that is effectively to take out the entire slab, reduce the grade, bring the stage up, which means you'll lose head height, get all new furnishings on the inside because those furnishings are based on the old grade, you'd have to get new ones to make it work. And the state will give you nothing towards it because they don't believe in auditoriums within elementary schools. So it's totally on the taxpayers' dollar to do that.
We've got some nice plays there.
Yeah, well, you could still have some nice plays in there. But the other side of that is, the reality is, when you talk to Michelle and the other people within the building, they only use it a handful of times during the year.
Right.
So for the community, for us to ask the community to spend significant dollars on an area that's seldom used, that we can give a comparable space to that is included in the MSBA's program.
Right.
Again, I think we're showing that we're trying to be thoughtful of the taxpayers' dollars to give them the most we can out of it, but also get a better end result and resource in town.
You're going to say a larger audience here, so I think it works better. All right.
Marilyn, do you have other questions?
No, that was it.
I know it's your school.
It is my school, mine.
Chris, thoughts?
No, I'm good for now, if you have something.
Just a few reactions. First, kudos to everybody involved. I know the people at home can't see the design, but it looks terrific. And I really like the fact we take advantage of a lot of the building and expand out off the building to create some of this new space we require. Kudos to Amy for a great articulation of educational content. That's a great story about how we've got a positive word out of someone we haven't in the past, so.
It's kind of fun telling them my bachelor's degree was in architecture, too. I'm sure that's her at all.
She was working. I'm sure, and I appreciate your sensitivity, Bill, to the timeline and your comments, you know, that it may be a little disappointing. I'm sure it is a little disappointing, especially if you're a Borough parent right now. And I'll be honest, I'm always, you know, pushing, you know, and trying to understand why these projects take so long. Because if I was a Borough parent, I'd want to see the fruits of this as well. However, I think where we sit, I think doing it right, coming up with this end product, doing it in the right timeline that meets the town's financial capabilities, especially in light of the project we just talked about, you know, that's coming first. I mean, I do think the plan makes good sense. That's my opinion. I don't want to speak for the other members of the committee here. But I do think, you know, this is a school we'll be proud of for a long time. So could we do it faster? It'd be great if we could, but I certainly, you know, having said that, that I wish we could go faster, I do think the plan makes an awful lot of sense. And Bill, you know, to toot your horn for a minute, I mean, you have shepherded a few of these projects through on behalf of the town, so, you know, I think we all, committee, school leaders and community at large appreciate your perspective on how to do these things right. So I know I'm comfortable with the plan as presented. Marilyn, Chris, do you feel the same?
Yes, I am.
I just have one question. What is the group space? I saw three different rooms for that.
Oh, that's a good question. Go ahead.
So that provides an opportunity. So when we think about our instructional program, where we have whole-group lessons, small-group instruction, the flexibility to be able to take a group of students and to work in that space, you might bring two first-grade classes together and you're doing an activity. You have an opportunity to have an additional space that allows for flexibility in programming and activities that you're doing. At the same time, when we look at the preschool space, when we think about the gross motor skills that we're working with students and being able to have a space where they can work on gross motor skills, they now have that currently as an example. They're working with our physical therapists, occupational theorists on the stage in the hallways. They don't have those spaces. So we're going to have a dedicated space where they're able to do different activities outside of the classroom that are still really integral to our instructional program.
Okay.
I know at the middle school that they do have a couple of those group spaces. And I remember, yeah, we'd have like student council meetings in there.
Open stage.
Yeah.
I was going to say, the open space in the hallways, right?
Yeah, they get plenty of use, at least in the middle school, from what I remember.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah. And that's a good, that's a good point because that was one of the things that we were able to say as part of the educational program is that we do have that and have experienced that in one of our schools and we do utilize it because it's really an important space to have.
Yeah, I think, I think at the middle school, when we built that school, the concept of the space was twofold. It was to give the teacher who might be doing two separate things at the same time, allowing some of the kids to go on their own and actually do something in that area right outside their door, effectively.
Right.
And allow them to continue with some of the other students doing, you know, whatever the current plan was and then kind of switch back and forth. It gave them that opportunity. Also was a growth thing where basically in that building, that, those spaces were designed as a classroom space. If we ever needed to, based on growth in the town, a wall goes down and they become another classroom. So if you ever really looked at it, you would have realized.
Just in case.
Right, exactly. So there was a lot of thought put into that, but it, in the end, no one was really sure how it was going to work because we didn't have it before. I think we've got nothing but positive response from the middle school teachers and the administration over there on how they can use that space in so many different ways. And when you look at the elementary, it's even more critical because of the children we're dealing with. Having a few of those spaces in each of the areas, first and second, third and fourth and pre-K, and the kindergarten being over with the first and second, really gives us some, a great way to do it. The other thing, as long as you're talking about that, you'll also notice there's a couple areas, probably the easiest one to see is just outside where the cafeteria is, kind of like a little oval wall there. And this is actually something that not only we think is a big plus, but the MSBA thinks this is a big plus as well. And that is, you'll notice if you kind of look around the plan now, you'll see two or three of those, actually, I think four of those. One in the pre-K, one in the cafeteria, one over on the first-grade kindergarten wing and then one over in the third and fourth grade wing. And those are really meant to be kind of student engagement display areas where their work can be shown, where they could have, you know, a presentation-type thing out in the hallway where, and there's enough room that they can actually make that work. But, you know, especially on the elementary level where they might be very proud of something that they've done and created, being able to have that in an area that's especially, that's related to their particular things, works very well. We're not looking for additional space to do it. We're carving it out of hallways and space like that to make it work. But it is something that they have seen in many of their buildings recently and they really think it's, it is some way to engage, you know, the actual activities that the kids are doing outside of the classroom.
Yeah, it really sends a strong message of what's important and what we value as far as their work and...
The media center is the library?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I assume it's still educational research-approved or thought that, you know, the traditional building of just square room, square room, square room, we need to keep pushing the envelope on that, right?
Well, we've talked about like the reader-writer workshop model, the math workshop model, it's groups, it's having space for them to have very intentional games and space to work together collaboratively. We know collaboration's so critical as far as a skill, you need those spaces and you need the flexibility.
Okay. Anything else, guys? So I'd like to just get a temperature read. I don't think we need a vote, but Marilyn and Chris, are you supportive of the plan as presented going forward?
I am absolutely supportive.
You're comfortable with this? Okay. So Janet, just for the notes that we've approved by consensus, the initial design is presented tonight. I know Tina, who's not here, has sat on the committee with Bill. I know she's supportive. So when it comes time for any kind of formal votes that Bill wants, we'll review it again, but I think we'd like to proceed as planned. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
So quick FY18 budget update.
Really only two changes from the last one. We have a number of, in the Hearn, in the high school, because of the salary adjustments from people leaving, people coming and, you know, some maternity leaves and stuff like that. Basically, we've been able to pull about, just about a hundred thousand dollars out of the payroll lines for that, which is a fortunate thing because with the needs of the special ed areas, we've actually had to hire four and a half positions so far this year to cover either people moving in who had a pre-existing IEP, which obviously we have to take over and manage, and a couple of those had one-on-one requirements within them. within them. Um, so again, we're obligated to immediately hire someone to be that one-on-one. Uh, we've also had some, uh, you know, a couple of instances where, uh, children who didn't previously within our own district have that need, have, have actually elevated to having to have that need. Um, and, you know, again, trying to, uh, to, to deal with those issues now while we can within the district, uh, rather than have to have a problem later on that, that could force us to, uh, you know, move a child out of the district. We want to address it as soon as we possibly can. So, we pretty much used up the, the savings in those two areas. Um, and, but, you know, at this point, I think we're stable till, till the, the balance of the year on that. Um, we do have a little bit more that we will, uh, on salaries that we will be pulling out, um, as we kind of clean things down a little bit. Uh, just a simple example of, of in, um, the superintendent's office, obviously the change with positions. There's a little bit of savings there that will come out, um, which we'll, we'll pull into the next budget statement. Um, we do have a, um, we finally are getting the solar money. Um, you're not seeing it on this because Randy and I are still trying to work out the, the full details on how this works. But basically, the two solar fields, the one on Elm Street and the one, uh, on Belcher Road, West Belcher, I guess it is, um, the old landfill, i- is going to create basically about two hundred thousand dollars of, um, solar credits against our electric bills, the school departments. However, of those two hundred, a hundred, a little over a hundred thousand will be going back to, um, the actual installer. Um, they, they get a portion every, of every bill. We get the full amount, we get the gross, then they, then we have to pay them for, obviously, the equipment that they've installed and, and everything else, which works out to just a little over fifty percent of the cost of what we're going to get back. So, we will probably generate, um, in the eighty to ninety thousand range, um, this year. We have an agreement with the town side at this point that we are looking at, you know, energy programs to, to bring our energy bills down even further. We were offered one recently where all of the, um, these four foot fluorescents, um, can be converted to, uh, LED lights. Um, and the program basically was for a dollar a bulb, we could do it. We bought enough to do the entire district. It was a little over ten thousand dollars, which we'll take from that savings. However, we'll get additional savings because now our power goes down, um, it, from a dollar down to about fifteen cents for, you know, uh, on our usage thing. So we, we save tremendously. So, the town side has been very supportive of us trying to drive down our electric bills for the long time for the taxpayers, uh, which we've done with all the exterior lighting, just like they have done with all the street lighting. Um, now we're doing it with interior lighting to try to do the same thing. Um, and we're hoping that, obviously, that we might be able to also work with them to use some of this money towards the Taylor School, uh, boiler, um, replacement, which again will be under a rebate program, um, and generate some, some good savings to the community. So, um, you know, and then after we, we go out of this, then basically the money will end up being just a reduction to our, our energy bill. Um, because this is a twenty-year program as far as the rebates go.
So, summary is, we are looking thirteen thousand better than total budget at the moment. And you continue to either work your magic or have incredible luck on having your, uh, expenses offset by your, um, savings. Uh, so I think there's some magic to that.
No, I, you know, I think we're, we're fortunate.
Fortune.
Most years. So, um, you know, I think the, uh, you know, again, we, we had a really good meeting with the AdCom when we went through the, the budget process this time and really showed to them, you know, that there is, it's the one thing about a budget of this nature, um, you need to have that flexibility of bottom line, um, as compared to a, a smaller budget, um, because we do have these things. Uh, you know, as I said, the, the four and a half FTEs, we did not budget for. Um, I don't feel bad that we didn't budget for them because we had no idea that they were coming. Um, and, and quite honestly, we wouldn't budget for something just for the sake of budgeting for it. So, therefore, it's always a pressure on us to hope that there are savings in other areas that we can pull back for to make the budget work.
In all seriousness, you know, where you have flexibility and where you don't. So that's great.
Exactly.
Any questions on the budget update? Good. We just, uh, get a motion to approve the budget update as presented.
Make a motion that we approve the budget summary statement as stated.
I second that.
All those in favor? Thank you. Okay. Acceptance of request for proposal for athletic training services.
So, um, as you know, um, a few years ago, I, I think we're actually in our second full contract. So this would be probably a year's, going into year seven. Um, the town, uh, the school department decided that based on the needs that we had with, um, you know, issues that were happening on fields, uh, obviously the concussion protocol became a very big issue. Um, and having people that were appropriately trained to deal with, um, our students' injuries and, and, uh, evaluate things as they go on, not to mention just to be able to do the baseline studies and other things that need to be done upfront. Um, we went out to bid and, uh, we were very fortunate to get Brigham and Women's to actually be one of the bidders at the time. Um, they got that bid. Uh, we've been very happy with their, um, their services. I, hopefully the, um, the parents have been as well, because it's nice that they're a community, uh, hospital. So if you have to go to services for one of their doctors, at least it's, it's, you're not having to, to go, um, you know, out of town to do it. You can do it right in town. Um, so again, we, we tried to do these contracts for three years, um, to have some stability. Um, we did go back out to bid, we published, uh, published the bid, we, um, gave what the billable hours we expect. Uh, we have upped it a little. We were, um, at about a thousand hours an hour. We're up to eleven hundred and seventy-five, and we just found that that was necessary based on the, uh, number of times where we actually had to have a second, uh, trainer available to us, which again, uh, someone like Brigham and Women's, which is large enough, can actually supply that. Um, and that happens typically when we have, you know, events happening in multiple locations at the same time. Um, so, you know, after dealing with, uh, the athletic department, we kind of calculated it out. We, we think this gives us a little bit of a cushion, but not a lot. Uh, and it's, we're only billed up to the amount of hours we actually use. So it's not, you know, but to be fair in your bidding process, you have to tell all the bidders what you think you're going to use. Um, you know, we advertised it, and as I said, in this, particularly this time around, we only had Brigham and Women's. Um, well, it's not, because I think it gets very regionalized. When you look at it, when, you know, I talked to other school districts, there really is people within their back door that try to do this work. Um, so, um, you know, I think from our perspective, we've had a great relationship with them. Their increase is two percent, um, which again, when you look at the cost of, of payrolls and everything else, their own health, you know, care costs themselves. Um, you know, I think that's reasonable. And, uh, again, I think that gives us the, um, the control over the services. They have their doctors oversee the process, uh, which I think is critical to us. Um, it's not, we're not responsible for the training of the, the trainers. We're not responsible for finding a substitution when one's out. Um, this all lies on them, and they've done a great job, you know, over the last six years. So I highly recommend that, uh, you approve their, their contract to move forward for the next three years.
I see where it says must obtain them in three quotes. We didn't get three people in, so we couldn't.
No, well, you're, you're supposed to go out and try to obtain three quotes on any, any project. You do have leeway when you have, um, past experience with a, um, thing that you can, you can select and when's in the best interest of the community, which obviously this is. So.
Obviously, yeah.
Um, you always have the right, if you, as a school committee, felt that you needed to have additional quotes, you may still not get three, you might only get two.
Right.
Um, to reject this. Um, and quite honestly, I think if their pricing was, um, out of whack, I would tell you to reject it and we'd go back out. I don't see this as that issue.
What happened?
And again, I see their service level is high, so.
I'm comfortable with it.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we, um, award Brigham and Women's Hospital, Department of Orthopedics, for the contract of athletic trainer services for fiscal year nineteen through fiscal year twenty-one.
I second that.
All those in favor? All of us, Janet? Thank you. Donations. Nice to have donations.
It absolutely is.
Oh, nice.
So our first one, which they've always been so supportive, which is from the Rotary Club. We have our Credit Fair for Life, which is tomorrow, that's taking place, which is a wonderful opportunity for our high school students to really get a taste of what the real world will be like when they're off on their own. But we have a donation of five hundred dollars from the Rotary Club to support that activity.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the, um, check from the Rotary Club of Foxborough for our Credit for Life Fair for the amount of five hundred dollars.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Approved. Thank you Lori Rudd and the Rotary Club of Foxborough for a great contribution to a great event. Have you guys heard about this event?
I have, yeah. It, so I believe it's just the seniors.
Yeah.
And, uh, they're going tomorrow, actually.
Yeah, you'll enjoy it. It's, uh, I think it's a, it's a neat thing. Not, not this year. You'll enjoy it next year.
Thanks.
It is an eye-opening experience to really see how far can you stretch your dollar and what it's going to be like to be able to manage financially.
It's kind of like Exchange City.
Yeah.
It's the next step up.
A little grown up.
Lot, lot, lot more, yes.
More grown up version, yeah.
Yes. I always compare those two.
Yeah.
Hmm?
Tomorrow, yeah, I'm gonna go tomorrow.
And another one. Chestnut Hill Studios.
And from Chestnut Hill Studios, we have for two thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars a donation, um, as far as a commission, commission check to go towards the high school, to be able to be used, um, to, as the gift in the best interest of students at the high school.
Is that tied to the business they get from portraits?
It says on the memo that it's the commission.
Right.
Yeah.
So it comes back to us.
Given back.
And they're not saying we have to use it for a student? We can't afford it or anything? It could be any, any, anything?
Probably seen that before. I don't remember. That's, that's nice.
Yeah, it is.
It's a nice tool. And to be able to use that as the high school sees fit for the, for the needs of the students.
Okay.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we accept the two thousand four hundred fifty-nine dollars from Chestnut Hill Studios for the high school.
I second that.
All those in favor? Approved. Thank you Chestnut Hill Studios. Photographer, owner, Gary Jeffroy. Thank you, Gary. Okay, other matters. Anyone care to begin?
I'll go.
Chris?
Um, this Saturday, I'll be judging the National History Day competition at Foxborough High School.
Nice.
Uh, it's run by, I think I pronounced it right, Leah Kadula.
Yes, good job.
Teacher at the high school, um, who runs it, even though there's no Foxborough High students in it. She organizes it for the entire district and does a really nice job with it.
That's great.
Very nice.
And good luck to all the teams in the playoffs this week.
Well, to that point, um, if I can climb on board to that, um, what a great sports season our teams are having. Uh, hockey's playing as we speak. You got your Twitter feed going underneath there or anything?
Oh, no.
We keep afraid of us, Bruce.
Basketball plays this week.
Girls' basketball's Wednesday, boys' Thursday, I think.
Um, so it's been, I know, uh, Mr. Cormier's very pleased, I think, with how things are going. And ramping up now for spring. How, how is your team doing, Mr. Connolly?
Good. We play tomorrow in the first round.
Yeah.
And I think the wrestling team finished second or third.
Right.
And the states, uh...
Um, you home or away?
Home.
Home. Who are you playing?
Darfy, six-thirty.
Good luck. Good luck. Anything else, Chris?
No, I'm good.
Marilyn?
Um, the Credit for Life is tomorrow, as Amy was saying. Um, I work every year. I'm gonna give you a little tip. Start with the housing.
Okay.
Okay? Because you have to have a roof over your head.
That's true.
I have to send so many people for credit repair. And I'm like, you guys, you're, what are you buying, a five thousand dollar, you know, five thousand dollar a month car, whatever. I'm just making up numbers here. But, please start with the housing. That's all I'm saying.
Right.
It's a really important part. The clothes aren't as important. The transportation, you can get a second-hand car. Okay, I don't want to have to send you away.
Oh, three Sequoia will do fine.
And so, yeah, yeah, exactly. You can have a minivan. You can have the Sockamom van. Um, and also we had the drug, drug program up here today at the high school. What's the name of it? I'm sorry, I'm just...
No first time.
Thank you. No first time. Do you guys want to talk about it at all?
I thought it was very interesting in that, uh, most of the time, I feel like what it's been in the past with anti-drug sort of assemblies, is they'll play a video, a police officer, a teacher will talk for a while and talk about, like, uh, from things they've heard, how bad it is. But what I thought was interesting today was they brought in a man who was in long-term recovery, who personally spoke about it.
Was that Matt Gannam?
Uh, I think it's...
His name, like, O'Brien?
Matt Gannam, right?
Matt, I, I think that might have been his name, yeah. I know his first name was Matt.
Yeah.
And, uh, I thought it was really interesting to see someone come in, and he was really, really passionate about it. And just hearing from him was a whole new experience on the matter.
Eye-opening when they come in.
Yes.
Because we used to have the athletic nights years ago, they always had someone come in like that, that had been, had actually experienced it and told you they're just like you. And, you know, you have to have a peer coming in, telling you that, it's really good.
Yeah, it's different from just sitting down and someone pressing a play button.
And getting a lecture. Right, exactly.
Was John Gre- Green the person that ran it, talking about his son Evan?
It was he, wasn't it, right?
Uh, oh, yes, it was, yeah, it was.
But it was his wife that was talking.
His wife was talking.
Yeah, his husband was there, though. He didn't, he didn't talk too much.
I'm sure, I, I didn't even think about that. They probably, like, switch off when they tour schools.
We, we had him at my school, and it was the best assembly, um, we've ever had.
That's the man, wasn't he here one time last year?
Yeah.
Yeah, he came to, yeah.
Couple of years ago.
Sure thought.
Yeah, I thought it was very interesting.
And I love Matt. His YouTube channels are great.
Oh, really? No, yeah, it was good. And they're from around here. They're pretty south of you, so.
East, in Easton. His son went to Oliver Ames.
Yeah. And then, uh, there was a police officer who spoke. I think he lives in Stone. He was, he was really good. He is, like, it was very, like, fact-based, but not, like, in-your-face. And not, like, totally, you know, formal and, like, removed. But he had good information and, you know, they were nice people.
Both of his parents died of overdoses.
Yeah, he told us that.
The policeman?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, it's hard-hitting, but it's important and, you know, it was good assembly, I think.
Good. That's all from me, folks.
Okay, Bill?
I'm good.
Janet?
I don't know if anyone wanted to talk about the meeting scheduled for next Monday, or if we just want to wait until, because the two people aren't here.
Yeah.
Oh, we are.
It's a really good, uh, point. Have you had any initial thoughts on that or not yet?
I haven't even thought that far ahead, to be honest.
I, I have. I mean, we do have a meeting next week. This is that, this is that strange time of year.
Right. Between the va- two vacation months, it comes a little funny, yeah.
Yeah, and, and, uh, you know, if we had a lot of hot issues, I think it'd be important to have the meeting. I think, you know, we're having a smooth year, to your credit, and your credit, and your credit.
And your credit.
All our credit.
Everybody's credit.
So, I think it's a great question. Maybe you and I talk later this week.
Okay.
Uh, see what's on the, uh, on the docket.
Horizon.
Yeah, and I, I, Amy and I, when we postponed or canceled the last meeting, we both agreed that if we don't have anything to bring the committee together for, there's no point in having a meeting to have a meeting. So, are you guys okay with, uh...
I'll go either way.
You would have to post it by when? Thursday?
Thursday.
So we'd have to make a decision by Thursday.
You'll let us know by then. Okay.
Okay. I, I'm happy to, uh, cancel, knowing that we can always create a meeting if we need to.
Sure.
So unless something comes up, that'd be my thought.
Okay.
But I leave that up to you guys.
And is the parent leader meeting tomorrow night? I can't find my little hand.
No, it's, no, it's in March.
It's in March?
It doesn't start till the end of the week.
It's next, it's next.
Next Tuesday?
I believe it's next week, yes.
Okay, thank you. I lost my little handheld, Jeff.
Janet, thank you. That was a good one. Anything else?
Nope, that'll do it.
Um, just, we have our elementary family math night coming up on March twenty-second. And parents are asked to RSVP because we actually brought in a really exciting company to run the math night. And they are based in Canada, so they have to ship all of their materials. So we need to know who's coming. Normally, people can just come at the door, but we...
So it's March twenty-second.
Twenty-second. And the deadline to RSVP is tomorrow. We may be able to extend it a day or two, but that will be the most.
Okay. That's exciting.
Yes, very excited about it. Do lots of games.
Uh, no, thank you. Well, something that came to my attention that was so exciting was one of our own Foxborough residents who is on the U.S. Alpine Ski Team.
Yeah.
And that is in奉善, South Korea, as far as the Paralympic Winter Games, Connor Hogan.
Yes. Isn't that exciting?
Jake's older brother.
That's so cool.
Jake has an older brother in the Olympics and didn't tell anyone?
That's so cool.
He's a Paralympic skier.
Yes.
He wins all awards.
I was texting, texting with his father today, who's a friend of mine, they're very excited. It starts first week of March?
Uh, she posted something.
Seventh or?
She posted something today, I don't know what date it was.
March 10th.
10th. That's pretty outstanding, isn't it?
Yes, it's awesome. It's so exciting.
Yeah.
To be able to go and to look and to see Foxborough, Massachusetts and see.
He's, you probably haven't had the opportunity to know Connor over the years, but he, he's a very driven young man who has, he impresses me because he's gone out west for lengthy periods of time on his own to practice and to train and has won awards there, obviously, because he's been chosen to go to the Olympics, so very, very impressive.
Just think about the amount of determination and hard work that it takes to be able to achieve that. It's just quite amazing.
Yeah.
So very exciting.
Yeah.
And I know just talking from people who do know him in the district or did, even early on, just the passion for skiing, always the passion that he talked about all the time. So it's an amazing achievement.
Anything else?
Nope, that's, that's all.
You guys were great contributors tonight. That's right. Anything else you guys want to add?
Is the high school play this weekend? Do you know?
I just saw the day.
Second and third.
That's a new question.
It's a second and third drama, it's a second and third.
On Friday at 1:00.
That's what Tina would've said if she was here. Yes, I just saw the sign when I was coming in, it said March 2nd and 3rd. Is that already in Saturday this week? Yeah, because Ms. McChernock was talking about it.
So the drama competition.
Yes. She's been very busy with it, she was saying. Where's it going to be? I think it might be here.
Friday, we'll see here at 1:10, so.
Oh, it's gonna be here for the competition?
Um, let me double-check on that, but I know that I'm going to watch it on Friday.
Me too.
I don't know if anyone else is, but you are.
Right here. So Friday, I know that.
It's Friday in school, but next week it's a 7 o'clock play on Friday, March 9.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Joe, always count on Joe.
That's right, okay. Very true.
The last thing I was just gonna add was this thing the patch put out about this niche ranking about safest schools, calling Foxborough, you know, among the safest schools in Massachusetts.
Oh, I saw that, yeah.
And then, you know, I, I always say, whenever we talk about these rankings, I always say that, you know, rankings are interesting, but you can always put up different criteria that would rank it differently, right? But they had us 31st out of the top 100 schools in the state. And I thought the criteria was interesting. It was based on health and safety reports, expenses per student and student absenteeism, and suspensions, expulsions, law enforcement referrals and arrests. So I guess those are the characteristics or behavioral traits that they chose to use in this particular assessment, which I'll never take, you know, a good, I'll never look badly at a good ranking. On the other hand, we talked at the beginning of the meeting how important life is and being aware of what's around you and I don't think we ever take anything for granted and always keep your eyes open. Did you have a different reaction, any, any other reaction?
No, I, I think to your point is, you know, you, you take these rankings for what they are. I mean, they're taking public documents from the U.S. Department of Education, they're looking at other data sources and then they're compiling them based on the criteria. So it's always important to think about, well, where are they pulling their information from? And.
And who decides what the risk factors are.
Right, yeah. Right. So, but it's, again, to see 31 out of 100, we'll take it. We'll take it, absolutely.
And I liked what you said earlier and you said it in complete seriousness, which is how we take it, which is our first goal always is to provide a safe learning environment here in Foxborough, so it's an important, important topic.
And the chief and I are working on putting out a joint statement too, that to be able to go through, just even through PTO meetings at each of the schools, that will just again show that, that we do have that relationship, we work very collaboratively with all of our law enforcement agencies and that the safety and security of our students is paramount.
I think it's good for the parents to see that. And PTO is probably a really good way to do it, our newsletter through each school or.
That's a good point.
Because parents do worry when these come out, they worry about their own kids. Right.
Okay. Anything else? Everybody good?
Good, yes.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
It's Tina and Bevy tonight.